My cousin's praying that I would give him a flat. He took out, he didn't want to pray, he took out his small mark. So when he prayed white, he changed the hundred percent sign in agenda. So he prayed with white essentially through the house. So I've gone down and we've called for the hours. And it's really, he changed his sign up on his prayer.
Yeah, I'm sure you were. Probably a first. You're boring if every day was in the gym.
Okay, it's seven o'clock and welcome you to the number fifteen planning board meeting. Would you enjoy a quick meeting?
Much gracious, with the flag, the United States of America, in the territory of which it stands, conjunction, under God, and the principle of the justice from.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Fishami?
Yes.
Mr. Jardina?
Here.
Mr. Posel?
Here.
Mr. Malta?
Here.
Mr. Mixal?
Hi.
Mrs. Wright?
Rushed.
Rushed.
Mr. Artixto?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Okay, we have three items on our agenda this evening. What's the name of the first one?
Garber Pre-Owned Sign Located at 740 Bridge Road. The applicant, Amy Calaw, Vital Signs is requesting site approval to allow the installation of an approximately sixty-nine square foot building-mounted sign associated with Garber Pre-Owned Auto Dealership, a thirteen point two-one acre parcel located in a CO commercial outdoor storage district under section one seven eight dash seven of COVID-19 Webster.
Hello?
Hi.
Amy Calaw with Vital Signs and guess we're proposing a caselet channel letter sign for Garber Pre-Owned. I believe we're within code with our size and specs. It's in keeping with the other signage they have within their contracts, wider growth faces and low finish returners, LED lighting.
There is no lighting, you said?
LED, yeah.
Oh, just the figures are lit, right?
Perfect.
Just the figures are lit, just Garber?
Yes, and the, I, the, the logo.
That's centered obviously right over your loser, center of the building there?
Correct.
Anybody any concerns or questions? Building's all good, no, I think it's not.
Yes.
Anybody any issues, any concerns? Okay. You see her?
This town of Webster planning board considered request by applicant Amy Calaw for Vital Signs to install an approximately sixty-nine square foot building-mounted sign associated with Garber Pre-Owned Auto Dealership located at seven forty Bridge Road, a thirteen point two-one acre parcel, and a GSPL number zero seven nine point one seven dash one, dash one seven point one one. The planning board classifies proposed actions as type Q action under section six seventeen point five C nineteen of the State Department of Cultural and Regulatory Regulations and therefore without subsequent review.
Motion is in all favor? Anybody make a motion for a two? I'll make the motion for the Garber Pre-Owned Sign located at seven forty Bridge Road for a sixty-nine square foot building-mounted sign. The drawing number is B dash two dated September twenty eighth, twenty two. Second. Motion is in all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, good, I guess you're all set.
I do have a question on here. They were interested in getting some temporary signage. He had mentioned, Joel had mentioned a banner, which we don't want to do because we don't want any basic hardware on the face that's just going to come down. So we're hoping we can just put vinyl letters until the sign is completed?
Personally, I don't think I'd have an issue with this. You already got an approval for the sign. This is just something temporary until you put this sign, right?
In fact, it's going to look just like the sign, the sign pretty much what it will
You guys okay with that? I'll see if you do. You had a site approval, it's not like you don't have that. So if you got that, it's just temporary until you put your sign up.
Yes.
I guess you're okay with it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, Mark, go ahead.
Rough Day Resort located at ten eighty-five Garber Road. The applicant is Amy Holtz, is requesting preliminary final site plan approval along with public hearing associated with the reuse of an existing office building for a dog, daycare, training, boarding, and grooming facility, a zero point six nine acre parcel located in an MC medium intensity commercial district under sections two twenty five seventeen and two twenty eight dash ten of COVID-19 Webster.
Yes, sir. Good evening, my name is Chris Snyder with Passor Associates. I'm here with Amy, representative or owner of Rough Day Resort. This is our second trip to the planning board for site plan review. Previously, we went to the town board, which provided a referral. We then went to the ZBA on twenty-fifth October for we received area variance approval for two area variances related to the site, one for setbacks in the outdoor play areas, the other for approval of the lot size, which is smaller than the fifty thousand square foot requirement. And at the last meeting, you had asked us to provide some supplemental information, including photos of the existing interior. There were some questions on how the building operated, and we just wanted to make it very clear that while, you know, sometimes kennels are, the term kennel is not really something that applies to this use, even though it is defined as such in the zoning code, this is much more of a daycare facility, and I think the photos do relate to that. There were also other questions related to some of the departments, one from the sewer department asking about, you know, the trough and the system in the basement that would be used for animal waste. That's not really how this operation works. We're not going to be putting any plumbing. We're going to be using existing facilities of the first floor, bathrooms, and a standard drain and hair catch that will be acted periodically throughout the day or even after an animal is groomed. It's also important to note, Amy has mentioned this a few times in the past, that most of the animals are hickory, oh, are jennic, are dealing with poodles. Sixty percent of the clients are poodles, so they produce much less hair than, you know, other dog breeds that produce a lot more fur. The other element of this application is signage, which has been provided as a supplement. Does everyone have that? Did we get that distributed? Josh? Okay. So it's a forty square foot metal composite sign that's going to be mounted to the north elevation at the location where the existing sign is, and you can see in the material provided, it's at that location. No new lighting, internal or external. It is proposed, we're going to use the existing building, lighting that's on the building to illuminate it. It's going to be more of just, rather than an advertising sign, just to let people know that this is the site. You know, a lot of Amy's customers are term customers, and once they know where the location is, they'll come back to that every time. So it's not really, you know, trying to get eye catching from the street or anything like that. Based on the zoning code requirements, eighty-six point seven square feet of signage is permitted at this location, and we're only proposing. And that is it. Amy, did you want to add anything? Okay. Yeah, that's it? Thank you.
And you're, what are the, I'm looking at the signs, are they inside or inside the window or outside or? Are they temporary signs?
Yeah, so there's no window signage. The, what you're looking at on the top is a, is a sign that's already, that's existing Rough Day Resort. So the top photo, existing Rough Day Resort. The wall-mounted sign on the building is the one that will be placed in the location of the signage on the existing building, which is in the lower photo. So that lower photo represents the existing, or the proposed building ten eighty-five Garber Road. And where the sign is on that building is going to be the location of the sign that already exists at Rough Day, if that's helpful. There's going to be no, no window signage, just the, just the wall-mounted sign is all we're proposing.
Can the address of the place, I see it right by the door, there, was it nineteen something or?
That's the old building.
Yeah, but I mean, you're going to, you'll have an address on this one?
There's already one there.
Okay, so that's good that you can say, all right.
Yeah.
You, I think, I think Amy had mentioned earlier too, the sewer department was okay with things because you're not making any changes or anything?
Correct, we're not.
The waste, the waste is there, you have, you contract with somebody, you said, I believe, don't you?
Yeah, we can use Duty Master if we have a large amount of waste that needs to go. And as far as the sewer department goes, there's not, we're not a kennel per se that the agricultural department would see you hosing out a kennel or anything like that. This is clean very much like a home.
Yeah, the inside looks, okay, old guy's in there during the day too, from later?
We can actually do it for the outside.
You hold on. Actually, it looks like a pretty comfortable place.
That's right.
All right. They've been in a couple times, they've got the variances, so on and so forth, got use permit from town board. We were helping with everything. Anybody any concerns, issues? There have been no, no complaints or anything from neighbors, the closest, or the townhouses that, you know, down, just down this, they're there. Got it, okay. All right, keep moving then. Derek, you want to?
We have a, it's a public hearing.
Public hearing? Oh, wait, there, oh, sorry. Is there anyone here wishing to speak? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Anybody, anything else, nothing? Go ahead, Derek.
Town of Webster planning board consider request by applicant Amy Holtz to reuse an existing office building for a dog, daycare, training, boarding, and grooming facility located at one zero eight five Garber Road, now a zero point six nine acre parcel, having GSPL number zero seven eight point four nine dash three, dash one seven. The planning board classifies proposed action as type Q action under section six seventeen point five C eighteen under the State Department of Cultural and Regulatory Regulations and therefore is not subject to further review.
Second. A motion in a second, all favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, I found the other one.
Okay, motion to approve the Rough Day Resort. Motion approved, number approved for Rough Day Resort, ten eighty-five Garber Road, subject to PRC cameras, subject to determination and soon be aimed for request of variances. All approvals should be constructed according to specification in the town Webster. All set, will be complies with the standards of the town Webster, comply with all requirements of any state, county, or town agency, trust management, related signs, landscaping, etc. Approvals are subject to drawing as. That it, Dave? That's it? Okay, yes, we're approving, we're, yes. Second. Motion in a second for approval, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and for final?
Aye.
Make a motion for final approval for Rough Day Resort at ten eighty-five Garber Road. Subject to project removal of the cameras, subject to preliminary conditions, subject to all applicable governmental fees, subject to Department of Public Works approvals. Significant destruction shall occur within years, one year, and it's being back plenty more to expire around eleven fifteen, two thousand and three. Conditions of a preliminary and final approval are depicted on parapage of the plans and plans. Subject to resolution of final approvals, approvals are subject to drawing as. Okay, we have a motion for final approval, signing for approval. Signing for approval, is that, is that? Get a motion, is that, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're good. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Third item on our agenda, it's like, pardon me, sixteen fifty Bridge Road Auto Detail Shop located at sixteen fifty Bridge Road. The applicant, Steven Schleidel, is requesting preliminary final site plan approval along with public hearing to allow auto detailing to occur outside an existing storage building on a one point one-two acre parcel located in an LC two low intensity commercial district under sections two twenty five dash sixteen eight sub six and two twenty eight dash ten of the code of the town Webster.
Yes, sir. Good evening, my name is Steve Schleidel. I am a member of Tesley LLC, which owns the property there. I'm also the president of Steve's Continental Land Care, which comes from Tesley, majority of the building there for our landscaping and snow removal. We store a lot of our tractors and stuff like that there for winter season. We have one of our employees that runs tractors for us that also has Auto Detail Shop. She does a lot of interior cleaning. She has some high-end cars that they do a nice detail on, they store for the winter, and then clients get them back out in the spring. It's a relatively small operation, and he does all of his work inside, so we're looking to get him approved to run his auto detail business out of that location. I believe you guys have some photos attached to that application. So the building is sectioned off into a couple different sections. The two bays closest to Bridge Road are the bays we're looking to use for auto detailing. I think it's around twenty-six hundred square feet out of the ninety-eight hundred square feet building. And like I said, one of those bays, he's looking really just for storage of vehicles throughout the winter for some of these nicer cars that he has. The way the town code is written, it does not right now call out auto detail shops anywhere. It's lumped in with all the other major, like a Delta Sonic, auto repair facility, and things to that nature. So when I met with Josh, he actually threw some questions, I believe, to the attorney, also ran it by co-enforcement, that it could come back to the planning board as long as the general use, which we're seeking of the auto detailing is not outside of characteristic of the neighborhood, it's something that the planning board could approve. In my letter of intent, I did pull out some other businesses that are in the area. There is a VIX Auto Reflection, which currently has, I believe, is a use variance through the zoning board, and they are running out of LC two. There are some other pre-existing non-conforming properties, Bummas Tire and Auto, Clem's Garage, Moto Action, Costanza Sausages over there, Chain Building, Septic and Sewer, and there's also some farms in the area too. So I think what we're trying to do is pretty much really in characteristic of the environment.
Well, no, you, the building turned out nice, looks good.
I did.
As far as use, detailing is automotive, it's automotive. There's an automotive that does add a five mile line program, which also does this type of work. I just wish when you came in, you were up straight with us, because in minutes, you said, that's why we kind of went along with this, you needed that size building to accommodate your tractors. No mention that you were going to convert it into this. However, because you put the bathroom in the middle, kind of made me scratch my head and say, why is he putting the bathroom in the middle of this building as opposed to along the wall? And now I know why you did it. So this, this was our, you had to have had this planned out.
We actually had to boiler the whole utility area in the middle, just because radiant and floor heat, we had to have that kind of centrally located. So our current shop is filled up with tractors, and, you know, we're probably going to be to the point in the future that we're needing additional space, and at which point we will take over and use that space there.
Okay, well anyways, bottom line of it is, this board's got to make the determination, you know, is it, is it a similar use? Should be allowed in the LC two. That's, that's the issue. The other issue too, I was going through the medicine, and is this pretty much a current picture of the place?
Uh, yes, it is, yeah. I can't remember, the driveway's paved, I don't know if it's paved or not.
Yeah, it's big here.
The driveway is paved, yeah.
But you were going to put landscaping up in the front there and offering then the sags on the two sides, and I guess you were going to have some planning. Did you want to put any landscaping in?
I still have to put the landscaping in the front.
I'm sorry?
But I still have landscaping to put out at the street.
That's still to be done?
Yeah, and there is some buffering on the side, and if we add anything else on the side, we've got to cut down a really large maple tree because it's super densely shaded back there. So there's a little bit of buffering on the side and that, that tree there.
Okay, I, I, I just kind of just, I would have hoped you were, wanted to do this and said something in the first place, we're doing so much easier. This kind of gives the impression it's like, ah, just keep the building up and then let that go out, but it, you know?
Yeah.
And that's why, that's why we're here tonight, otherwise we wouldn't even be here. We didn't, we didn't go along with it, I'm sure.
And my original intent was to add the lean-to this year or next year.
Yeah.
And when we actually wanted to pick up the building permit, we had everything on there, and builders said it was going to be cheaper and easier just to do it all at once.
Close it all?
So we decided to do the whole thing all at once and then knowing we were eventually going to need that space.
Okay. All right, anyways, that's where we're at with this. Our charge is to make a determination of if it's similar use to, what is allowed in the LC two? Well, I've got several questions. Number one, where are you going to park the cars that are coming in for doll-up from other dealers?
Great question. So a lot of it is residential Webster coming, he sets up appointments, so a customer comes, they might drop off a car in the morning, it takes them two, three hours to do the car. Once the car is done, he lets the customer know, they come back, they pick it up, and then he might have an afternoon appointment. So we're not talking about ten different vehicles in there throughout the day, it's, you know, two, three vehicles at most that are coming in.
Does he do dealer work?
No automotive work whatsoever, not inspections.
Does he do doll-ups for dealers?
No.
Automotive, auto dealer, used car dealers?
No, he is not.
Does, who's he doing?
Just individuals, like if you or I have a vehicle they want dolled up and cleaned.
Number one, I would want to see that there is no parking outside overnight for any service dates, and that all parking be restricted to the front of the building. I noticed you got a large parking area on the sides, which could accommodate a multitude of cars, and I know that dealers sometimes don't have places to park their cars. So we don't want that to be a parking lot for dealers.
We can absolutely put a condition on it for that, that there's no overnight parking and anything is right there in front. We actually have twenty tractors inside the facility for our snow removal, so that means when it snows, we've got twenty operators showing up there, and they all need spots to park, so that's why there's, you know, a fair amount of space on the outside of that to park.
How many people are going to be working in this shop?
It's himself and one other part-time person.
Is it going to be one operator, or is it going to be two separate shops? One, you're going to come back and say, well, at least this one, this guy, at least that side, whatever.
It's, it's one business in there.
Let's talk about materials. Doll-up shops, I mean, they've got a, number one, degrease engines, you've got to degrease for sand, you've got to lower out water, where's that going?
So everything that he does is basically just a wash and wax on the outside and then vacuuming out armor all on the inside of the car.
So no degreasing of engines whatsoever?
They, they don't get into that. It's just simple outsides and insides.
So because there's absolutely no way for these kinds of materials to go anywhere, that would, if we went along with this thing, it would have to be restricted, completely restricted. Those are my concerns. Okay. Anybody there?
If you're washing inside, where is it going? Like are there drains on the floor?
Uh, there'd be a floor drain, yeah.
Is there sewers out there, or is it septic?
It's septic.
It's a septic system. I'm looking, going through the woods here, trying to find someplace where we can pigeonhole this thing to see if it fits. Clothing and drag store, personal art gallery, dressmaker, dry cleaner, floors, hardware, insurance, jewelry, laundromat, liquor store.
Upholstery shop is listed.
A what?
Upholstery shop, and half of his work is insides of cars. You know, you bring your love seat with a statement in it for this guy, or rocking chair, or whatever the case is, I mean, he's doing upholstery. Half the time he's spending is on the inside of the cars, making the seats and floors and all that.
I don't think that was a designation for an upholstery shop, was it? Let's put it in there. There isn't any place?
So, so the way the town code reads, the, for LC two, anything permitted in LC one, banks, credit unions, restaurants, communication towers, mini storage.
Yeah, I got it written for me.
Yeah, and then there's that last one, which is other similar uses not permitted in any other commercial district, kind of finding by the planning board that such uses are in the same kind of characteristic.
They're, they're just permitted in another district, and that's the automotive, that's, you know, see, that's the catch, that's what we're, not trying to fight you, just trying to work with you.
No, I appreciate that.
See, there's nothing similar, you put a, that's LC one, LC two, it's got a few more things, and they're totally just similar, you know, to what you've got.
My concern is the waste.
The waste meaning?
Like the lot, no, chemicals and wash dirt off the cars.
Yeah. That's a big concern.
And the ground.
I mean, you can't run, it doesn't, I'm sure you don't run that into your septic system, what do you do, you run, got a drain going out and sheet flowing into the yard or something?
Yeah, yeah.
How many cars does he actually do?
A Slow Days one, a Busy Days two.
So there's not a whole lot of drainage going on?
No. And his, his slowest time is in the winter, you know, his busiest time is in the summer when people are really buying their cars to look nice. And, you know, there's not a whole lot coming off cars in the summertime. It's not like these are vehicles that are being out mudding and stuff like that with all sorts of slugs coming on. They're, you know, people are paying a few hundred bucks, you know, two to four hundred dollars to have their car, you know, dolled up, you know, got pretty nice cars coming in there. They're maintained care of and aren't weaking stuff and all that.
What do you feel is thick, I mean?
Well, there is a concern about the cleanness.
What's that?
There is a concern about the cleanness going on on the ground.
Yeah.
Even if it goes into the septic system, you know, the subsurface.
It is, it is a few.
What comes, what comes to mind with that is the car washes, they have specific systems that they use for recycling. They have the wash water or it's sent into a septic system, and they're regulated on that. And just kind of from personal experience, years ago, I'll hunt up the car washes for volunteer agencies, teams, kind of things like that. There was always like contacts from the regular car wash companies and those people who are doing fundraising for car washes to meet their requirements. This thing being a facility that's specifically building washing cars in over two a day, it is continuous, it seems, there has to be some provision maybe for capturing soapy water coming off of the vehicles. It's just something that I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know what's available for some.
Not sure that that's something that's going to do well.
All the soaps they're using are environmentally friendly, biodegradable. I could check with them to see what they're using for soap, it was all biodegradable soap.
I hate like that putting something, I know what you're saying, I agree, but I hate putting something in that you can't enforce, you know? That, that means there's nothing here.
How would happen, how would open the door for vulnerable abuses in the LC two? It's not even a meeting, it's LC two. I'm sure there's a lot, there's a lot of owners of LC two properties that would just love to see this happen. And then, like I said, we don't want to do this.
What are you suggesting doing, I don't, I don't know what to do.
I'm against it.
I hate, I, I, the only thing, like I said before, not to belabor, I, I just, a little bit ticked the, you didn't say something upfront, what you wanted to do with it, you know? Because, I mean, the layout of it, you got the bathrooms in the middle, you know what you're doing with it, you know? I just wish you would have been upfront with it from the beginning. But now it's there. Don't like stepping in, you know, hurting, I'm with it, but I don't, I'm looking in here, I've gone to LC one, LC two, I can't find anything that even comes close to it.
Like I said, there is a VIX Auto Reflection who currently operates in that area, it's.
There's what, I'm sorry?
VIX Auto Reflection, they're right next door to Chamberlain Septic. And they are an auto detail shop, very similar to what we're doing, low volume, very nice vehicles. And that's just taking place out of a residential house with a two-car garage. That's currently not approved and takes place in the same zoning district.
So either Webster's side or?
Correct, Webster's side.
So either Webster's side?
Yes.
And is it true to do it there?
Yes.
Through who?
He received a use variance.
Yeah, that's associated with.
That's because it was a major home occupation and he was going to be living on site, so he did get zoning board approval in that particular instance.
So that doesn't mean that it's currently these home occupation use, if it's a home occupation situation?
It's a little bit different than this scenario, but I just wanted to get it out on the record.
What do you feel is wrong to do? Anybody? There's nothing in here that even comes close to relating to automotive. Could suggest a bit of variance, it's the only thing you can do.
Or number two, it's a two-car house, it's weather, it's similar, and whether or not it's detrimental to the other uses of the district or adjoining uses. So then it has to be both of those.
The rear of the property does back up to industrial zoning. I, I did go through the, the uses of the property. There's a lot of things in there that maybe are no longer applicable to house societies today, like one of the uses is wash repair. I'm not sure we have a lot of wash repair businesses looking to open up or trying to, you know, there's a lot of people out there now that don't have time to take care of their own cars. We're trying to find a way to make it a, a community business that Webster residents can come drop it off. When his times are slower, we're looking to partner with him, kind of run some of our equipment in the winter, to continue providing services to, you know, customers in Webster with their driveways. But obviously, the, we had to decide where it's going to fall.
I'm going to stress this a little bit, let me think. You received an approval, you got a variance, to make this storage facility for automotive vehicles. Got motors in it, right, your tractors? So if you currently have tractors in there, that's automotive use, right? Well, it's automotive, huh?
I agree.
No, no, well, okay, let's, let's back up and take, take the, he's a lot, they have tractors in there, so he's a lot, they have tractors in there for storage. Yeah, but what, what happens when one breaks down, you got to repair it. You don't take it to a tractor repair place, you gotta have somebody repairing it there. So he's got repair work for his tractors there. Am I going anywhere with this?
Oddly enough, one of the things on the list.
Huh?
One of the things on the list is wash, that. That would be a facility to create significant loss of water.
Water, yeah. Yeah, you're right, that's a good point too. I, I.
I mean, when our tractors come back from a snowstorm, if it's overnight, not much of an issue, but if we're out here in rush hour, we can't even see out our windows when we get back there, so we can't get the salt. We do have to do a quick, you know, rinse down with a hose.
Yeah, sure.
Just get the salt off and stuff like that, so we can see safely.
Okay, Dave's point is valid, that this is opening up the door.
Well, it is.
But it could, does it need to be addressed that with a variance?
Could get a variance, it's a determinant.
Let me toss another point out.
Ah, I think you might be quite, because you're going to get rid of this thing. Anyway, now I want to go there. If he's got storage for tractors and so on and so forth, they're automotive material, right, they got motors in them. And he's got to do repairs on them, he does the repairs on them there and clean. This is strictly just cleaning cars out, is, is that a similar use to, to what he's got approval? I could make an argument and say yes, you can do it, turn it, help me out here, help you out, whatever.
Personally, I would refer this back to the zoning board, and if they approve that kind of use, whoa, all the LC two property owners are going to have a question. Yes, whatever it's.
This would be something we can, this personally is.
I would agree with Dave. They have a call with the zoning board, and it's very difficult when you start in, I've got confidence in the Southern District. And the other thing that I was hearing was about the weight, I think, that and, and, um, so he said that and I, I would agree with that as well.
Yeah, that's double edged.
That was a bit, what's that?
That's double edged too, because like you said, when you're considering the vehicles and they got salt and everything on them, they get washed down, every one of those kids has to get washed down, so that's, that's the normal procedure anyways.
Doesn't change the picture at all if their employees of our company are already running tractors and washing down their tractor, and they're the ones that are doing the detailing and the car?
I'm just totally impressed about washing the cell off of it and more about if you get into a state of saying, if you're doing a whole detail on the car, you're detailing the engine and you're degrading the engine, that, that would have become different.
It is the real.
And how do you write any of that, you don't write?
No, you can't.
Actually, another quarter of zoning board?
What's that?
The first one is on the board.
You recommend the zoning board?
Yep.
Did you add it?
That's what I have to do.
All three of you guys? Same thing, because everybody's going to know it, he's not.
This has to be, this has to be scheduled. Not yet, recourse event.
Okay, okay, so we'd have to deny this, have his request tonight, and then he has to go and file for approval with the CBA.
Yep.
Josh, you want to be able to? Well, I, I think that we're going to be addressing the whole vehicle section of our code during the conference and planning process, because there's only one district that allows any auto-related uses, and that is the CO district, which is fully built out in a very small portion of the town. We do get quite a bit of requests from businesses looking to locate in Webster, and they ultimately forego Webster, because the burden, obtaining a use variance is a very high bar. And it's all about financial hardship, and in this particular case, I think he's going to have a very difficult case, making a case to the zoning board. You know, there are other similar vehicle-related things in the area, and so we thought we would bring it here under this provision. But again, it's obviously up to the planning board. I do think that we're going to have future conversations though about delineating the different levels of intensity with auto-related uses. I don't think it's appropriate to lump them all together, because they're not all the same. But unfortunately, we do have that differentiation in our company.
Correct. There is nobody that's been more of a proponent to opening up more zoning for automotive uses than me. In the past, I was in the automotive business, as a realtor, I have calls all the time for automotive use in the town. And we have very, very, very small available properties. This is right to do this in a conference, it's not right to do this place deal, and, and here it is, it's in front of us tonight. So, I'd rather see the app, you know? But not this way.
This had a variance. For, did you, did you need one?
No, I don't believe so, I think he needs.
There was a, my ear crockery line, I think I was ten feet closer to the setback.
So how?
The original purpose of that building was to store this equipment.
Store, yeah.
That's what it was, it was there for, because it was more convenient to have it in Webster, where they had a lot of clients and a lot of customers. Than to keep moving from Ontario over to Webster. So it was for storage of these tractors.
It does fit.
This is not what we're dealing with.
That's in the code, since, you know, it's called mini storage or self-storage facility or facilities. That's, that's how that fits.
Right.
That makes sense, yeah.
Right.
Okay, so what do you guys want to do then?
I want a motion to deny.
Okay, then, go ahead.
I'll make a motion at sixteen fifty Ridge Road Auto Detail Shop, and, and, and full on site plan approval in the night.
Okay, you have a motion for denial in the site. Yeah. Yeah, probably should put that in there, Dave, it's a good point. Why, why do you make a motion to deny that, because it doesn't fit?
It doesn't fit the zoning.
Anything, anything in the LC one or LC two?
It doesn't fit LC one, LC two. And, you know, it just doesn't fit the most of the product. And it was not the intent of the product to begin with, and definitely one of the ones for future confrontation.
Okay, so we have a motion, one minute, second.
Oh, second.
We have a second, what other role call this is?
Mr. Malto?
Lady.
No, you have a favor of it.
You just, you're denying.
Yeah, your motion is.
Aye.
Mr. Hostel?
Aye.
Mrs. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Kishani?
Yeah, I believe this thing could be worked to fit. Not saying I like it, I was happy with it, but I, I think there's a facility there, just with storage for tractors, which do need repairs for this. This would be a minor use compared to repairing tractors and storing them, to my opinion, but, nah, anyways. Okay, I guess.
So just for clarification, is it that it doesn't fit the general character of those permitted in the district? Or that it will not be, or that it will be detrimental to the uses within the district or adjoining areas?
Well, it doesn't have to be either or, it just doesn't.
One of those.
It's not detrimental to, it's not detrimental to other uses in the district, because they are in the district.
So then, the reason it's being denied is because it's not the same general character as those permitted within the district?
Right. There's nowhere, you know, LC one or LC two, neither of them show that it's an all use. So that's, how are you, you have to, Josh, no, I guess, set up, get a ZDA appointment?
Alright.
I guess by doing that anyways, you could probably clarify it, and so there is a motion in the future if somebody else can say.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, let's see, I think we have, we have more, I'm sure you have the file in there?
Yes. Consideration of Resolution clarifying and amending prior resolution twenty-one dash oh nine three of the Webster Planning Board, granting final subdivision and site plan approval to Forest Creek Equity Corporation for Section One of a seventy-nine lot, single-family residential subdivision on sixty-nine point five acres.
Before consideration of that resolution, because when reviewing this particular file, it became apparent that the, during the secret review process, the negative declaration was not memorialized at the time of this particular resolution. So that resolution, blaming the secret review, which is twenty-one dash oh nine two, should be clarified as well, so that the, if the board chooses to pass the resolution, that they could officially memorialize the negative declaration.
Okay. We should just go ahead with, you know, first, or you should.
It would be appropriate to consider that resolution for tentative.
Okay, then, why don't we do that then? I think, Derek, you got it, you got that, right?
Yeah. So again, this is the, all of what you're saying. The resolution twenty-one zero nine two, got to October seventeen, two thousand twenty-one, established the planning board as the lead agency under secret for this action, and this action was a type one action. At that time, a negative declaration, you know, and that memorialized your issue. Fixing the resolution. So you got a motion for secret or type one action. Whereas the town of Webster Planning Board consider request by applicant, Forest Creek Equity Corporation to construct a seventy-nine lot, single-family residential subdivision and secret. to construct a seventy-nine lot single-family residential subdivision of sixty-nine point five acres consisting of parcels SBL zero five zero point zero two dash one, there's three eight point two, and zero five zero point zero two dash one, dash two three dash one, located in our three single-family residential district under sections two two eight dash four and two two eight dash eight of the code of the town of Webster. Whereas at this August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting, the planning board determined that the action was a type one action, that the action was subject to single agency review, and that it was the most appropriate agency for making the determination of significance and declared itself a lead agency. The planning board received no objections to this declaration of lead agency. Whereas the planning board has given consideration to the criteria for determining sign significance set forth in section six seventeen point seven C one of secret, and it has one, considered the information contained in the formal assessment form, part one, number two, considered public town's correction to the planning board during the public hearings, and number three, completed part two and, and part three of our formal assessment form. Now therefore be resolved that the town of Webster Planning Board hereby determines or proposed action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for the reasons set forth in the attached form of our formal assessment form, part three, evaluation of magnitude of importance of projects impacts and determinations and both significance. Be it further resolved that the town of Webster Planning Board is authorized to take all actions reasonable and necessary to file a negative declaration and discharge the town of Webster Planning Board's responsibilities lead agency for the, the action. Be it further resolved that the town of Webster Planning Board, based on the information analysis above, the reference supported documentation and discussions with the action by the town of Webster Planning Board has died by any events, that the proposed action will not resolve its significant environmental impacts. Be it further resolved that the town of Webster Planning Board therefore makes a determination of high significance. Be it further resolved that the town of Webster Planning Board, based on above reasons, issues a negative declaration, is not exempt of this determination.
Okay, that'd be a motion, we need a second.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we've got that part, uh, the way it is, sir.
I'm just here for the administrative part, if there's any questions or any clarification of that.
I think, I believe also we're doing is modifying the original drawing that was approved. Um, other things came into play once it got approved. Uh, that being a secondary access that was required for safety reasons by the, uh, fire, Monroe County Fire, or whoever it is, Monroe County law, or whatever it was.
New York State Fire.
New York State, is it? Okay. And that fire code, that's the one. And, um, all you've done was just modify that with that extra road cut, then just to accommodate access to the property.
Perfect.
Based on the fire code. Anybody, you all familiar with that, the way it proved it? And the significant, the, the change is not really a significant change, it's a minor change, so therefore it's not a whole new process. Public hearing, it is just a modification, just addition to that piece of road that was cutting in over there, that's it. All right, with that, anyone have questions or concerns?
No.
We're all okay with that?
Yep.
All right, then, now make a motion that we, uh, that we approve the modifications of the Aberdeen subdivision. I forget the address, salt wrote. Um, based, was that?
Two thirty.
Two thirty, is it? Okay, two thirty, so. Uh, based on the modifications presented, uh, that being the addition of a, another entrance, ingress and egress for safety reasons based on the New York State Fire Code. Senator, have a motion in a second.
Mr. Kishani?
Aye.
Mr. Giardina?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Posel?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mrs. Wright?
Aye.
Okay, we're all set, that's it.
That is, just for clarification, that is lies in both their preliminary, that was preliminary proposal that was issued before, and that's the final approval out in the second one.
Do you need two more?
No, you, it was a, it was a, yeah. Zero nine three was the final approval.
Okay, great, don't worry.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Walter?
Yeah, great.
That was an easy name for it, wasn't it?
For Jay.
Yeah, baby, I think too much.
Yeah, it's worth it a lot.
Okay, I guess, folks, with that, we're all set for the... We got any decisions? And how do you do them for our...
We have a motion to approve the, uh, the, uh, first... Uh, Penner has presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second?
Aye.
All in favor? Okay, we're good. And with that, I guess we are all set for the scene, thanks for coming in. Okay, we'll see you later.